Our recess is over. Ready right now to go into our public hearing portion. First item on our public hearing is the ordinance to amend or reordain Section 150 of Warren County Code, Soil and Erosion Sedimentation Control. Mr. Beam?
Excuse me, Mr. Chair. Good evening, Mr. Chair, and members of the board. Since July 1st, 2014, when the Department of Environmental Quality was officially designated by Virginia to oversee the Erosion and Sediment Control Program along with Stormwater Management Program, many changes have taken place. Many of the changes that have been made to the Warren County Chapter 150, Erosion and Sediment Control, have come from the transition along with the amendments that have been taken place since that time. The focus of this update are threefold. We're replacing outdated code sections that have been changed, provide corrected terminology that changed as a result of the new terminology to assist citizens, correct information on submissions to reflect how business is being transacted with the new technology. This public hearing has been properly advertised. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
I just want to remember when this was first brought up. It's like the state does a lot of times, they pass ordinances or laws without actually understanding the implications. Sometimes you don't have to.
That is an accurate statement.
But it seems like to me if we had the choice that the local building department could take care of soil erosion, or we could let it go to the state, which would be additional time involved for our citizens, or we did it, I don't know, I don't think they gave additional funding or else. I just remember those issues there.
In 2014, we undertook, actually it was 2013, we undertook a major process to go through and combine an erosion and sediment control program and stormwater management program that never took place in Warren County. The legislature decided that you had to opt in if you chose to, if you wanted to, to do stormwater. Prior to that final legislation, which happened right before the July 1st, 2014 timeframe, it was mandated that the county take it over with no funding. It was an unfunded mandate. However, you could charge individuals for that service. They had fees set up to accomplish that. They're finding at this point in time that those fees are nowhere near covering the costs of what they were telling us to have to do. So Warren County chose at that time, like most of our jurisdictions around us, in the Lord Fairfax Soil and Water Conservation District, chose not to implement a stormwater management program. We did that specifically because of what you just said. They put in place laws and ordinances without really knowing what the effect is going to be, and that's one of the reasons we have waited as long as we have because we knew changes were going to happen and we wanted to see where the fallout came. At this point in time, we're under review, so we need to make sure that we update the ordinance properly at this time.
There's another thing I remember, 4002, probably 2006, '07, somewhere along there, where they passed the ordinance where you had to go out to a site and inspected for erosion every two weeks.
That is correct.
And then if there was a significant weather event, you had to go out there within 48 hours.
That is correct.
And no county ever made an hour to implement that.
I would agree with that statement. However, their records won't reflect that. They do reflect a lot of times that they are able to do that. Some of the jurisdictions actually do, some of the larger jurisdictions, but there are complete departments that are set up to handle that specifically. And when I say complete departments, I'm talking probably in excess of 15 to 20 inspectors for just the erosion and sediment control.
Maybe I thought I had.
I have a question if you will.
Mr.? Go ahead, Mr. Fox.
By the contractors being kept up to date, if any change is coming down from Richmond on a regular basis so that they don't make mistakes in soil erosion?
Yes, most of the things that are in this document this evening have actually been taking place all along, and we have been informing them as we go along. These are just putting it into our county code so that it actually reflects what's there. So prior to this, if somebody wanted to challenge some of these, they may have an argument because the Warren County Code does not specifically state that. However, we reference it back to the state requirements, and therefore it can be enforced in that fashion.
So they're being kept up to date?
Yes.
That's all.
So, Mr. Beam, I have a question, follow-up to what Mr. Carter had to ask you. So what in fact are the stringent conditions of this, or what are the implications of this new change? So you said you guys postponed the implementation of this in order to avoid the very difficult requirements handed down by the state. Are those requirements still in here?
Yes and no. The requirements have been placed there already. We have just not updated our county code that goes expressing to Mr. Fox. Because we also referenced the Erosion and Sediment Control mandated by the state, we actually have those in force. We just don't have it in the Warren County Code. Therefore, there's a discrepancy between the two. There could be that argument between those.
So it just wasn't codified, but you were following the requirement nonetheless?
That is correct, yes.
Okay, that makes more sense. Thank you.
Are there any more questions for the staff? Public hearing is now open. Mrs. Sharaki, has anyone signed up?
No one has signed up, Mr. Chairman.
Is there anyone that would like to speak? If there is no one in the audience that would like to speak, this is final call. Public hearing is now closed. What is the pleasure of the board?
I move that the board supervisors approve the updated code sections, increase information and updated policies as related to new technology and reordain Chapter 150 of Warren County Code.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any additional discussion or comment? Can we get a roll call, please?
Mr. Fox?
Aye.
Ms. Colors?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman?
Aye.
Ms. Oats?
Aye.
Mr. Carter?
Aye.
Next item on our agenda is the ordinance to establish the Shannon Woods Sanitary District. Mr. Berry?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and board members. The Warren County Board Supervisors has received a petition signed by over 50% of the qualified voters requesting that a sanitary district be created for the Shannon Woods subdivision located off Morgan's Ford Road. The proposed district includes a total of 12 homes and 14 lots as depicted on the map that you should have a copy of. If a sanitary district is established, the county will appoint an advisory board made up of residents of the district. The advisory board would submit a proposed budget and tax rate annually to the board supervisors. The board supervisors would review the request, hold a public hearing, and approve a budget and tax rate. The county would subsequently bill residents of the sanitary district as part of their semi-annual real estate tax bill. The county charges a rate of 5% plus $350 in return for handling the collection of sanitary district taxes. There are a number of advantages in your agenda item. I won't read all those unless you'd like me to. As proposed, the sanitary district operations will be managed by the county's Public Works Department. The department currently maintains the oversight of Shenandoah Farms, Lake Farm Royal, Osprey Lane, Linden Heights, and Wildcat Drive sanitary districts. As part of the legal process to establish the district, the county is required to make a finding, a fact of whether creation of the district is necessary, practical, fiscally responsible, and supported by at least 50% of those persons who own real estate property in the proposed district. As mentioned, the proposed sanitary district includes 14 lots, but 13 property owners. In order to determine whether the petition is supported by the majority of property owners, county staff mailed the tax survey to determine if the landowner was in favor of the request. Out of the 13 property owners, a total of nine responded they were in favor of the proposed district, and three against with one no response. Based on the responses, we can say we have a majority of property owners. 69% support the request pursuant to Section 21-114 of the Code of Virginia. The board of supervisors is required to hold a public hearing on the request. This is a new step that was incorporated into the code by HB 1740 in 2017 to ensure that in addition to the registered voters, the petition was supported by a majority of the property owners. At this public hearing, property owners and residents will have an opportunity to express their support of or in opposition to the request.
Does the board have any questions for the staff?
Just one, and maybe you touched on it. Do they currently have a POA?
They do.
And they have a board then?
Yes.
So in theory, when it comes down to it, we could just appoint the advisory panel, the POA board?
Yeah.
Because that's how we've done it most of the time.
Yeah, it's a smaller district, so more than likely to be more like your Osprey Lane or Wildcat Drive where you just have an advisory board, I mean, of those folks.
Do they have all of their necessary paperwork as a POA?
As a POA?
With the county, with, I mean, are they a legitimate POA?
Well, they're more of a small group, so a legitimate POA meaning...
Tax ID number, accounts, setup just for them so if they something goes sideways, they don't have to go through probate. General concerns that we should...
Well, I think this one, we won't actually have an agreement with another body. We'll just have an advisory board. But we do have a couple of members here that could probably answer those questions.
If there's someone else that would like to speak, there are more than welcome to.
Evening. Yes, we are a small property owners' association. There are only 14 of us, 14 lots on the road. It's only half a mile long. We do have accounts. We do not have a tax ID because we do not need one because we are so small, I believe. Not sure.
No, sir.
Then I'm misinformed on that one. We do have separate accounts for the property owners' association. Is that, was that what you were asking?
Yes.
Okay. As far as I was aware, we are in compliance with everything Mr. Berry had asked for. What else are we in need of?
Well, I received a letter and Mr. May had too. We just got these actually from one of the property owners that has a litany of questions and concerns here, and one was the fact that you do not have a tax ID and that according to this letter, that there are several names that are used. Shannon Woods uses several different names for associations such as Shannon Woods Drive Road Association, Shannon Woods Owners Road Association, Shannon Woods Road Maintenance Association, and then Shannon Woods Property Association. So, you know, there's, I don't know the answers to these.
No, we have only one name.
Okay. And then there's not a tax ID number. It's under a social security number of accounts?
There is a tax ID number. We do have a bank account set up. It is set up as a business account, which would require a tax ID number.
Okay, okay. Well, like I said, we just have to, so.
Right.
Yeah, I have no idea of...
This is also a law that is not in favor of the district, so.
And it's not, they do, in a number of years.
Four years.
So I, you know, with this in hand, I was, you know, personally, I think we need to get, you know, get these all cleared up so that there is no issue with misunderstandings.
Yeah, there is only, there is only one name, there is one checkbook. The only thing we do is we vote for new treasurers or board members. There's never been a name change as far as the account. Some people may refer to it as the homeowners' association, you know, when they type up a letter or an invoice to send to someone. I went by the name, I'm the current treasurer, I went by the name that's on the bank account, which is the property owners' association.
Now, Mr. David, do you have something to add?
I was going to suggest, Mr. Chairman, we have not reviewed those, that letter and the questions, and if you've completed the hearing here, then we would be able, and then table this item, we could come back and give you a report on that at the next meeting.
And I'd be glad to give this...
I've given one to Emily already. Go ahead.
I just wanted to clear if any confusion, this is going to be very different than Shenandoah Farms, Lake Farm Royal. You're not going to be sending any money back to these folks once you establish a board. The county is going to maintain the money. We're not, we're just going to have a board, they're going to be advisory board to the county, but we're not going to send any money back. There's not going to be any contract services. So it's totally different than dealing with a large property association where you're sending a contract service payment to them. And I think that seems to be what you're wondering about.
It's not just that. We've got a document that's four pages long, plus a lot of other stuff. And I think that, I think those need to be answered, or at least need to be addressed. And I'm willing to go ahead and open up the public hearing.
Okay.
If anybody else wants to speak about that, that's all well and good, but I think that we know where we need to go, and that's to get some, just some resolution to some questions.
And I wish I'd gotten this sooner, so that I just got it.
Right. I have a question, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, Mr. Fox.
I noticed it says that it's a 50-foot right away and it goes through another subdivision. Could that be an issue at any point?
It's not, it's the same subdivision.
Or me?
A different subdivision?
Well, I don't know if it's a subdivision.
It was a right-of-way that she wanted to make sure was notated on the plaque.
Who owns this right-of-way? I mean, is this...
It's a dedicated right-of, just a right-of-way user.
Dedicated, no issues there.
50 foot.
Okay.
Yeah.
Mr. Ham, does the advisory board for a sanitary district have to be a registered POA or an HOA?
No, you don't have to have it.
It doesn't require one?
Represent two sanitary districts that don't have one. I mean, it's not required in Virginia codes.
Okay.
Lake Farm Royal doesn't have it.
I don't know that.
They have a POA, they appointed a separate advisory board, and I think we're considering making the POA the advisory board in the future.
Well, and that's what I was trying to get to. Like your Osprey Lane, your Wildcat Drive, basically your POA disappears. It goes away. It's just internal accounting. So they're not going to go back and establish a new POA or get a new number, establish account. They're basically going to stop using that account. All the funding will come to the county. We will maintain and manage all of their funding. So the questions really for that person should be cleared up. They will no longer be managing funds at all.
No, I get what you're saying because I understand with Lake Farm Royal how that works. And I don't foresee once, you know, since this was handed last minute, I think, I'm not saying that anybody's doing anything wrong or anything like that, but I just feel like we have to do our due diligence to prove to this person and try to answer their questions before just automatically voting on this and deciding tonight. So please don't take it as, if we think you're doing anything wrong, we just have to...
Will we open the public hearing, sir?
Yes.
And then we can go ahead and table, see if there's anybody else out there that wants to speak.
No words. This public hearing is now open. Mr. Sharaki, has anyone signed up?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Gary Kushner.
My name is Gary Kushner, 1106 Peshawar, and I don't live anywhere near this subdivision, but I oppose the establishment of the Shannon Woods Sanitary District. These 14 properties are in a private subdivision with private roads. In my view, it's inappropriate for the general government to take the responsibility for maintaining their private roads or the work of collecting annual dues from property owners who are the beneficiaries of roadways in their private community. There is no duty of all of Warren County citizens to accept the administrative effort and financial responsibility for anything in their private area. There is a property owners' association whose duty it is to manage all aspects of the common areas, roads included, that exists basically for the exclusive benefit of their private community and to collect dues that are necessary to fund management of any common facilities. Why should county citizens assume the cost of managing and funding the improvements in a private subdivision? It is understandable that the 13 affected subdivision members would like to be relieved of the road maintenance and dues collection responsibilities for their private area, but the county government should not be willing to accept the transfer at the expense to all other citizens not enjoying use of the roadways in their private subdivision. Thus, I urge you to deny the request for establishing this sanitary district.
Mrs. Sharaki, has anyone else signed up?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Final call. Yes, sir.
Yes, my name is Brian Blodgett, 704 Shannon Woods Drive. And I would just like to address that what the previous speaker said, the county doesn't pay for this. We pay in addition to our dues for this maintenance and for the help that we get for what the county does. So I wanted to make that very clear. Also, to the letter that the other entity sent for the one homeowner, they had every chance to come here tonight and speak, and they're not here. That's all I have to say. The majority of us are in favor of this, and that's one of the reasons we have a little government.
Did you give this gentleman a copy of the letter that you all received? I didn't have received it. It is a public document now. And that way he may be able to help address some of that. Because I'll give it that only one. And we'd be happy to work with you if there are any questions you have on us. And again, we're not saying anything is wrong or anything at all. Just want to get some clarity to some of the questions.
Ms. Colors, do you have more than my copy? Because I have Mr. Blodgett's email address, and I will scan this email and take him personally tomorrow morning.
Okay. No, this is your one.
Thank you.
Thank you. If there's no one else that would like to speak, the public hearing is now closed.
I would like to...
Yes, ma'am. Did not see you raise your hand.
It's okay, I just did it as you were speaking. Breenie Powell, 568 Shannon Woods Drive, Farm Royal, D. N. I would also like to add that the property owner that provided the documents does not have a home in the subdivision. It is a vacant land. I just wanted to add that into your decision. Okay, thank you.
If there's no one else that would like to...
Before we close the public, sorry, the public hearing, and I'll ask this of Mr. Ham, would it make any sense to go ahead and, what's the word, recess the public hearing and then we could have it back on the first meeting in November if there are some additional comments to be made? I think that's legal, because if we close it, technically people aren't supposed to have a chance to say anything. And I don't think it needs to be re-advertised.
Yeah, I think you're probably right. I'm not positive about the re-advertising requirement, but I think you're, I'm pretty sure you're correct on that, that you could do that without re-advertising if you want to, but you could also just close the public hearing and act as a later vague if you like.
Well, I'm just thinking that if you close the public hearing, you're not going to be able to speak unless the public presentation's at the next one. And there again, if there's some additional people who want to come forward at that time, it's only a morning meeting. I mean, that's the other option, we can close the public hearing and just go ahead and table this to make a decision then.
You can do that, but already took it into here, and if you want to, that is an option.
Would that be agreeable, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, it would.
I agree with that, Mr. Carter.
So I move that we recess the public hearing until, what is it, November 4th?
Yes, sir.
And then they'll give staff opportunity to research the concerns from the letter.
Is there a second?
Mr. Chairman, but you voiced that the public hearing was closed.
I was also interrupted because my question, my concern was interrupted, and my statement was in the...
Where does it matter?
Say again, sir?
Where does it matter? It's in the record.
Call for the question.
Say again?
Call for the question.
Did we have a second on that motion?
Is there a second?
I'll stand there. Mr. Carter?
Aye.
Ms. Oats?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman?
Aye.
Ms. Colors?
Aye.
Mr. Fox?
Aye.
Next item on our agenda is the conditional use permit 2020-0802 lots and Tamara-Faliciano for short-term tourist rental. Chairman?
The applicants are requesting a conditional use permit for a short-term tourist rental. They would like to offer their home for tourists to enjoy the area. They intend to hire a local management company to manage all aspects of the operations for their short-term rental. The property is five acres in size and has a duck and goose pond on the property and borders the Shenandoah River. The applicant purchased this property earlier this year, and they own the property adjacent to the home. The location is 71 Shepherd's Road off of Bucksmill Road, and it's zone agricultural. In my staff report, I go down through our whole zoning ordinance and touch on all the supplemental regulations. The short-term rental dwelling does meet the setback requirements to all adjacent dwellings. And the planning commission recommended approval of this with the following conditions: The applicant shall comply with all Warren County Health Department regulations and requirements. And the maximum number of occupants shall not exceed eight as determined according to the health permit for a four-heavier dwelling. The applicant shall have the well water tested annually for E. coli and coliform bacteria, and a copy of the results shall be submitted to the planning and health departments by the end of each calendar year. The public hearing has been properly advertised, and all adjacent property owners were notified. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions for Mrs. Logan?
Just to see that, I guess the planning commission, they had a public hearing and...
They did, no one had speakers.
There was nobody that spoke.
No one spoke.
And, Ms. Logan, there's also no POA or no HOA in place in this community current?
Correct.
Additional questions? The public hearing is now open. Mrs. Sharaki, has anyone signed up?
No, Mr. Chairman.
As there has been, no one signed up. The public hearing is now closed. What is the pleasure of the board?
I move that the board of supervisors approve the conditional use permit, request of Luis and Tamara-Faliciano for a short-term tourist rental with the conditions recommended by the planning commission.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any additional comments or concerns? Emily, could we get a roll call, please?
Mr. Fox?
Aye.
Ms. Colors?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman?
Aye.
Ms. Oats?
Aye.
Mr. Carter?
Aye.
Item number four is the conditional use permit 2016-1003 for Gregory and Mary Hewson to add conditions related to indoor classes/seminars and seasonal agricultural activities. Mr. Petty?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Gregory and Mary Hewson were issued this conditional use permit 2016-10-03 in January of 2017. It is an existing CUP for a rural events facility. The property is located at 4022 Rockland Road in the Shenandoah District and is currently zoned rural residential. It's identified on Tax Map 14 as parcel 26, and the applicant is requesting that the conditional use permit be modified to add seasonal agricultural programs and indoor classes and seminars. They want to do classes such as flower arranging, wreath making, and pick-your-own harvesting of pumpkins and flowers and such. Again, I won't go through all of these conditions as they are currently existing for the rural events facility. We have added to, as you'll see to the end, outdoor seasonal and agricultural programs, which include but not limited to flower picking, fruit and vegetable picking, or pumpkin patch shall be permitted, and one building on the property may be used to offer the sale of items produced on the property. And indoor classes and seminars shall be limited to 15 people. As of today, we did receive comments back from the Warren County Health Department and the Warren County Building and Inspections Department. the Warren County Building and Inspections Department. Like I said, we've got those today, and they have been provided to you this afternoon. They do have some comments regarding this additional use. And so, at this time, our office is recommending, because with the modifications, sorry about that, this does not go through the planning commission, it comes directly to the Board of Supervisors for a public hearing. So given the recent comments from both the Health Department and the Warren County Building and Inspections Department, we would recommend that the Board of Supervisors forward this to the Planning Commission for further discussion, as we ourselves have to go through these comments and work with the applicant to make sure that they can make these happen. But if you do have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those, as long as the applicants are here. If you have any questions for them pertaining to this use, this one thing?
Would the applicant like to come forward?
Yes. Greg Hewson, 62, Ashby Lane. My wife and I are owners of the property. We've operated it for two and a half years through a conditional use permit, and we're seeking to, well, my wife wants to grow flowers and have classes. I didn't think that'd be controversial, but anyway, I'm a little disappointed in the Planning Commission for letting me know at 5:00 PM tonight that they're recommending postponing this for further review. I will tell you that I looked through some of the documents they sent. One from the Health Department, which states the capacity of the sewage system is 650, 650 gallons per day. And so, we were intending to have classes. The calculation that they made was an eight-hour class for 15 people, which would require an additional 150-gallon capacity. They recommended hiring an expert to come out and do soil samples and expand the system. Well, if the house is not rented under the short-term rental, that's where we're going to have the classes. So there is not a need to have an additional 150 gallons per day if there's no one in the house. The house is rated for 450 gallons per day. So, in that sense, I'm a little disappointed that they didn't go a little deeper. And as far as the building permit, it was the flimsiest thing that I have ever seen. They just said, "Well, it's additional use, it's a different use, so you'll have to have inspections for all the system." Well, all the work that we've done to the house has been inspected by the inspections department, and I feel like maybe we were interfering with his lunch or something when he had to actually address these concerns, because it just seems like a form letter to me. So, all in all, I prefer that the Board vote on it, to tell you the truth, because I don't believe that these additional requirements, I mean, for instance, the classes that she's going to have on flower arranging are two hours long. They're not eight hours. They're not going to be 15 people there for eight hours, an additional 150 gallons per day. I mean, our toilets are one gallon flush. That's 150 flushes. I mean, it's ridiculous. Now, they're bureaucrats, they aren't accountable to me, but they're accountable to you. And in theory, you're accountable to me as a voter. So, I mean, I guess I'm just a little upset, because we've really tried to play by the rules with everything to do with this property. And it's a historic property. We've done our best to maintain it as a farm, and 75 acres. And so, we're trying to do the right thing here, and I don't appreciate the obstruction that I feel I have on this. Thank you. Thank you, Chairman.
Mr. May, may I ask a question?
Yes.
Mr. Petty?
Yes.
So I'm reading this Virginia Department of Health document, and this is what it says. It says that if the indoor classroom seminars are limited to 15 people, the system must be designed to accommodate 150 gallons of additional sewage flow per eight-hour instructional period. That's per the eight hours. So if it's two hours or four hours, that's going to impact that calculus, correct? Is that what we're sending this to the Planning Commission for, so that they can evaluate this?
So essentially, what happened is, so they applied for the modification. We requested comments. We had sent them to the Health Department and Building Inspections. It took a little time, and you can see on the date that we got it October 19th. You know, I apologize that I only got it to them today, but I also didn't get Building Inspections until today, so I can't send them comments if I don't have them. And I can't speak, you know, I sent Mr. Davis at the Health Department the statement of justification that they provided to us as well, and he based his calculations off of the information that he was given. You know, I think that's what the Planning Commission would allow us to do, is it would allow the applicant to work with the Health Department to clarify some of these issues and with the Building Inspection Department, to make sure all the details are met, because maybe the Health Department's reading into it too much, maybe Building Inspection is. But there just needs to be time that they can work with these other agencies to make sure that they can have compliance.
Who's going to be their advocate? Their advocate for approval or move?
The zoning, we are in support of it. I mean, we feel like it's a viable use of it, but again, we can't, you know, we will work with the Health Department and the applicants to make everything happen, but, you know, the Health Department has their regulations, Building Inspections has their regulations to make sure the health, welfare, and safety of the people who are doing these activities are doing them in a safe environment. And so, we have to ensure that those priorities are met. I think one of the comments from, you know, from Building Inspection, I can't really speak for the building official, but when you start adding 15 people into a residential home and holding classes, there is a life safety component to that that they must take into account. We all operate, I will say, most people in the county operate on a private well and sewer, and it's concerning to the neighbors and everybody else to make sure that everybody's systems are working properly. So, we work with any applicant to, if, to work on their rights of their property, and we want them to fulfill, especially with these farms, to make sure that they can provide supplemental income to keep these farms alive. But we also need to make sure that everything, all the regulations are met for all agencies.
So again, if I understand you correctly, you said, or I seem to understand, that you believe that everything was okay. We are-
Accepting of the use.
I'm sorry?
We are accepting of the use of this pick-your-own activities, the classes. The zoning is good with that use, but again, as with any type of use, we need to ensure that they are meeting all the regulations for other agencies. Again, I can't speak on behalf of the Health Department or Building Inspections, that's not my expertise, and that's why we reach out to them for comments.
Yes, sir.
This did not go back to the Planning Commission at any time, did it? And if not, why?
So a CUP, so this is an existing CUP.
So they have a conditional use permit currently for a rural events center. A modification to a CUP only requires a public hearing at the Board of Supervisors level. If the Board of Supervisors feels that it needs to go to the Planning Commission, they can move it back to the Planning Commission. But the code clearly states that it goes to the Board of Supervisors for a modification, because the Board of Supervisors approves the conditional use permit.
Does it have to go back to the Planning Commission? No. Okay. Vote on it this evening?
No.
You can vote on it this evening. You can also vote to-
Send it to the Planning Commission for them to make a recommendation back to you.
Do we not also table it? Do we get these questions answered?
And you can-
Because that would be the way I would prefer to go, because I don't want to go back to the Planning Commission to delay this anymore. And again, it may be misinformation, things like that, so I don't know. Two weeks, November 4th?
If you take it to your next meeting, sir, we can have a revised recommendation. And I will work with the applicant-
And these other agencies to make sure that they're communicating that all the details that they need are met.
So, I have another question. If we passed their conditional use permit because it's conditional, conditional they meet all of the requirements. See, I don't understand this whole conditional thing, because if you're giving somebody a conditional use permit, that is based on them meeting the requirements as put forth in the documents that are supplied here. So why can't we not just vote on it and let them hash it out with the Health Department? Is that not the best course of action?
I think you may want to, you may want to revise these conditions to meet, whether we have a chance to meet with the Health Department and find out exactly what it is that they are thinking and what the applicants are doing that corrects this, so that you know what you're approving.
Okay.
So I don't want to put the condition on there, what the Health Department said and what the Building Department said, and then find out that it's not needed at all, and then, you know, we see the end.
Right. You're approving it right like it is.
Like I said, I would, well, first off, I guess you have to have the public hearing. Yes.
Can I ask a question before?
Yes, sir.
Okay. You have a conditional use for a rural events facility. What rural events do you do currently?
We host weddings and other private events. And I just want to make it clear that the house, per se, is vacant as much as it's occupied. When it's vacant, that would be when we have the classes. If it's vacant, we have 450 gallons per day capacity. So, it stands to reason that that's not a requirement that should even apply. So I don't understand that at all.
Can I ask, if you have wedding events there?
Yes.
What bathroom facilities are they using currently?
We have porta-potties.
Okay.
And actually, for the flower garden, we have porta-potties for the outdoor use there as well.
Okay.
It has nothing to do with the inside. I mean, we're talking about occasional classes of one to two hours showing people how to arrange flowers. I mean, if you look at, what the Health Department room, 12 hours, 15 people, I mean, really?
Okay. I just, I just need to be a little more clear, because it just didn't make sense to me. If you could have events there, why you hadn't already met a lot of these, so thank you.
And also, Mr. Chairman, the property, if it was zoned agricultural, this wouldn't even be a question. I mean, these are farm activities. The property owner before them rezoned it to rural residential because a cluster subdivision was planned, and then they got it and kept the farm. And I mean, it's gorgeous property. I mean, it's a beautiful property, but it's not zoned agricultural, so it doesn't fall under agritourism as a typical farm would, which hence the CUP, so.
The conditions you see on there, I mean, those are the ones that the Planning Commission staff and board put on there. I mean, the additional ones are coming from the Health Department. And I would think-
Right.
It wouldn't be any problem, just to clarify that. I don't think it's going to be a problem in result. So, you know, I would just suggest we open the public hearing, close the public hearing, and table it till the 4th. I agree. Public hearing is now open. Mrs. Shiraki, has anyone signed up at all?
I guess, Mr. Chairman, Todd Lewis.
Hello, my name's Todd Lewis, 358 Ashby Lane. Neighbors to the Hewsons, in fact, their farm fights up against, in fact, into my property. I've been on their properties, seen the farm. They've had open houses. You could have seen it when they purchased it, compared to all the work and dedication they've done to improve the property, the house, the historic house itself, nothing short of incredible. Everything they've done is very professional. It's just gorgeous, as she mentioned. I think if there was a problem, they would take care of it. I don't see any problem with having a few people come for a two-hour flower arranging class, and if they have to use the bathroom, they would not be an issue. I was not aware that this was going to be a holdup prior to coming here this evening. As an on-site witness, I guarantee you that it would not be an issue. It's nothing short of spectacular, professional class act, these two. And I urge you to vote on it tonight, actually. I think it would not be an issue. Thank you.
Mrs. Shiraki, has anyone else signed up?
Mr. Hewson did sign up for the public hearing, but I didn't know if he wanted to speak again or not. Then, no, Mr. Chairman, no one else has signed up.
If there's no one in the audience that would like to speak, final call. Public hearing is now closed. What is the pleasure of the board?
I move we postpone this to November 4th.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Additional discussion?
I just think this, I don't think it's going to be an issue, but I think this just gives us time, and I would certainly suggest to staff that they expedite this, so we'll be ready to hopefully approve this at the next meeting. And I believe we have well-insepted tomorrow, so Mr. Davis from the Health Department will be there, so Ms. Logan, Mr. Petty may have a chance to talk to him as well, because they rectify it when we move forward. And obviously, you need to go touch base with the Building Department, so.
Any others? Roll call, please, Mrs. Shiraki.
Mr. Carter?
Aye.
Ms. Oats?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman?
Aye.
Ms. Colores?
Aye.
Mr. Fox?
Aye.
Item number five on our agenda is modification request for a conditional use permit, 2017-7-02, Warren County Fair Association, Frank Brew. I'm sorry if I messed that name up. That's correct. And add one parcel and modify one existing condition. Mr. Petty?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, this conditional use permit was issued in 2017 as well for a contractor storage yard. The property is located at 274 Fair Ground Road, and it is zoned industrial. The Fair Association is currently leasing the property from the owner, Frank Brew, and they are proposing to sublease the property for the use of the storage of new motor vehicles. This request to add an adjoining property 11, 11 is also owned by Mr. Brew and is 4.16 acre, 4.16 acres, and the applicant is exist, or asking to modify these existing conditions on the permit regarding the screening of the property. The zoning ordinance does not specifically define what a contractor storage yard is, but we've determined that the proposed use of parking vehicles for a commercial business would meet the intent of the existing CUP. However, these vehicles to be parked on the property shall be operable and under the same ownership of a single business entity. It is not to be used for the storage or lease of an individual's personal property, such as a self-storage lot. That would fall under a separate CUP. The applicants, and that was where the start of the applicants, did look to apply for a different CUP, but after looking into it, we realized that the existing contractor storage yard CUP would fit under what they were looking to do. We just had to add this additional parcel. And you will see the existing conditions that are part of that CUP. Again, we would just be adding Lot 11. And then we have amended or modified Condition 3 to reflect most of our current code. We eliminated the height requirement for a privacy fence, and instead of saying "and", it would be "or landscaping". We've seen in the past that it's been more aesthetically pleasing to do a landscaping buffer, which is approved through our ordinance, rather than a privacy fence for the neighbors and surrounding community. It just looks more natural. If the applicant or the renter of the vehicles did decide to put a fence up, they would be required per the zoning to follow that screening per security purposes. The applicant is here. If you have any questions from the fair ground, I'd be happy to answer any further questions. Again, this is a modification to an existing CUP. It has not been at the Planning Commission- It has not been at the planning commission level, it came straight to the board supervisors.
Is there, would the applicant like to come forward and speak?
You can.
Okay.
I wish you had a question or something.
Okay. Now, does the board have any questions or concerns for the staff?
Just have one point that Mr. Petty made. Who's going to be parking RVs there? Not individuals?
So it would not be RVs. From my opinion, it is a local vehicle dealership who needs extra storage, and they would be brand-new vehicles just for surplus reasons.
Additional questions? Public hearing is now open. Mrs. Shirachi, has anyone signed up?
No, Mr. Chairman.
If there is no one that would like to speak, final call. Public hearing is now closed. What is the pleasure of the board?
I move that the board supervisors approve the modification to conditional use permit number 2017-07-02. Frank Brew, contractor's storage yard, to add tax map number five, lot 11, and to modify the existing conditions on the permit.
Second.
Additional discussion?
Just one thing as far as the screening. I know a lot of people put up like Leyland, Leland, Cypress, which is fast-growing, but we don't get down to that, those hot weeds as much as far as telling them what to do, but I guess we do have some type of guidance or...
We have recommendations. We like to think that Mr. Windling and our planning staff is our master gardener, and he has a nice catalog of native species that we also work with some of VDOT's requirements, but keep them native. But yes, the Leylands are very popular because they grow fast and they provide all-year screening.
Go ahead, thank you.
Additional questions? Mrs. Shirachi, could we get a roll call, please?
Mr. Fox.
Aye.
Ms. Colours.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman.
Aye.
Ms. Oats.
Aye.
Mr. Carter.
Aye.
Next item is Z 2020-08-01. Frank Barnett, Jr., for an ordinance to amend or re-erdang section 180-28, industrial zoning district, to add commercial repair garage to the list of these permitted by right in the industrial zoning district. Mr. Petty?
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman. This was a applied for text amendment from Mr. Barnett to add commercial garage repair into the by right uses for an industrial zoning district. We do receive comments from citizens who want to grow their existing commercial garage repair that may be in their home or small-scale operation, and that would like to relocate it in the industrial zoning district. Industrial zoning district does provide code for adequate screening and operations that do not adversely affect the nearby properties. The existing supplemental regulations are included for commercial garage repair, and we feel that this is an appropriate addition to the industrial zoning district. Again, we already have existing supplemental regs for commercial garage that we would apply, but again, for an industrial district, we feel this is appropriate. If you have any questions, I'd be able to answer them. The applicant for this text amendment is also here.
Would the applicant like to come forward and speak?
No.
Thank you.
I'll answer your questions.
Does the board have any questions or concerns for the staff?
So this is countywide for industrial zoning district.
Correct.
And Mr. Barnett currently has a facility, is that where, that would encompass that now, too?
Correct. The board does own an industrial zone property, which does have a CUP for a hydraulic repair business, but this would allow him additional opportunities for that property. Again, but it is, this is a countywide text amendment.
Additional questions, please, sir? The public hearing is now open. Mr. Shirachi, has anyone signed up?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Bill Barnett.
Mr. Chairman, board supervisors, appreciate you taking up this issue. Warren County is pretty much the only county in this part of Virginia that does not allow automotive repair work to be done in the industrial zone. As a matter of fact, many of these, most jurisdictions in Virginia require it to be done in the industrial zone. You're painting, you're shaping metal, you're sanding, you're sandblasting, you're welding, you're shaping, you're working on industrial, working on machinery, and that's normally an industrial activity. And currently, all of that is required to be done either in, in Warren County, either in a commercial zone or by special use permit, in agricultural or residential zones. And so this is not a matter, this is really a matter of getting this where we would really prefer it to be, is in an industrial zone, and to allow that kind of work to take place where it belongs. And not that we should not permit it elsewhere, but certainly it should be allowed in an industrial zone where those kind of activities are a normal activity and the zone is designed for that. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Is this an issue that might be suggested for, to go back to the planning, not to go back to the planning commission, but to make it a by right use to be considered by the commission in the future by the planning commission?
So this would, this is for it to be a by right use in the industrial zoning district. As you mentioned, it is a use that is allowed in the commercial district, and it's by conditional use permit in the agricultural zoning district. But this is, this, tonight's text amendment is for it to be by right in industrial. It does not currently exist in any form in the industrial district now, so we would be adding this use.
So will this, what you're saying then, Mr. Petty, just for clarification, that in the future, should somebody come to us, they won't need to come to us because this will already be in place?
They would have to come to us as a by right application. Sometimes we need to make sure it has appropriate screening for industrial. I know that the property down that Mr. Barnett owns now does have screening, but yeah, there are some by right requirements, but yes, they would not need to go to planning commission. They would just need to come to us to confirm use.
Thank you.
Mr. Shirachi, has anyone else signed up?
Oh, yes, Mr. Chairman, the applicant did sign up. Would you like to speak?
Would you want to speak?
No, I'm writing about...
Thank you.
There's also a Julie Chikari that signed up, but I believe she has left.
If there's no one else in the audience that would like to speak, final call. The public hearing is now closed. What is the pleasure of the board?
I think that the proposed zoning ordinance amendment is appropriate for the public necessity, convenience, and general welfare, and good zoning practices. I move the board supervisors approve the proposed amendment.
Second.
Comments or concerns? Could we get a roll call, please?
Mr. Carter.
Aye.
Ms. Oats.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman.
Aye.
Ms. Colours.
Aye.
Mr. Fox.
Report, Mrs. Logan, for the COVID-19 expenditures for Warren County.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At your desk, I put the report, this is through today, actually, from everyone's expenditures that I've received for the COVID, the COVID expenditures, and this is at the 75% federal cost share, the category B expenses. So we are currently at $458,479.26. That was a large increase, actually, from last month, mostly due to school expenses and then general services, which are the bulk of our disinfection of public facilities and PPE that's being purchased. So those are the major categories that increased. And I just gave you the detailed expenditures for the departments that have changed since last month, and I gave you the schools spreadsheet. It's really good and very detailed, and I'm just going to give you that for the schools directly, and then some things I still have on my individual spreadsheet that I've put in there as well. If you have any questions, I know you haven't got to read it, read through all the details, but I'm happy, just stop by my office or give me a call, and we'll keep plugging along.
Any questions for town? Thank you, Ms. Logan, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next thing on our agenda is the reports. Any of the board members have a report?
Not a report, but just remember, or just remind everybody to get down and vote. A lot of different issues on the ballot, and I think there's still time for people to vote up at the registrar's office. I know I voted up there this past week, so if you're not sure, it's probably on our website as far as how long that's open. I think it may be open till the Saturday prior to, but I'm not exactly sure. But yeah, Mr. Daly shaking his head like a bottlehead, so we appreciate that. But no, I just, you know, it's important to get down and vote. Whoever you vote for, you vote for, but have your voice heard. That's all I have, thank you.
Mrs. Oats?
I just would like to report that on Friday, October, and I'm losing my time, I think it was the 10th, 11th, maybe 12:13, I don't, whatever, I attended the EDA strategic planning. It was a retreat, and it was Friday night and Saturday. There were a number of community business leaders who attended, and there was a lot of incredible information that was exchanged. We talked about the future and what we wanted Warren County to look like, and how we could create plans to work cooperatively with the town, and we talked about, you know, all sorts of tourism activities that could be included. And so I just wanted to say it was a very positive event, and I believe that this body is planning, Mr. May, if I'm correct, to have one of its own in November.
Yes.
So I look forward to setting that date. I think if we could set that date tonight, that would be wonderful.
Can we do the 31st?
Yes, 30 days, half, no, yeah.
That, we need to, we have a moderator that wants to join us. You need to verify with the moderator, then we'll set the date.
That he's available?
Yes.
Okay. And then I also attended the formation of a committee drug. I guess, I don't want to call it a task force because that's not what it is, but it's a community interest group to look into potential opportunities to help resource our community against the drug problem that we have. We have a huge addiction problem. We've had, I believe that the sheriff reported 1 in 600 people have overdosed in this community, which is a very sad number, and that we could work toward education of young people, perhaps, and try to come together as a community to find the resources and the people who can help us determine how to approach this issue as leaders. I think that also I'd like to state tonight, based on what happened in this room, is that I appreciate representative government so much tonight. We are representative for public, and the reason is because the passions of men need to be fought through, and if the passions made the decisions, then you could see what happened here tonight. Leadership is about bringing opposing sides together and finding a common ground. I believe that this community has so many hurting people right now, and as leaders, we need to build up and not tear down this community. It's time, I think, that we all agree to come together and try to find solutions and stop the contentious exchanges. I would be happy to lead an effort to do that, and I'd just like to put that out there on the public record. If anybody wants to form a group that is looking for solutions in the community, I would be happy to help lead that organization. So that's all I have.
Thank you. I don't have a whole lot to add. I was part of the drug group that we were trying to form. We will be solidifying it, I think it's next Thursday. Is that correct?
I believe yes.
Okay.
Next Thursday, not this Thursday.
Eight-thirty next Thursday.
Eight-thirty, yes, yes, correct.
So we've done a lot to look at the drug problem in this county. We also need to look at the problems of hunger, homelessness, medical assistance, transportation. I mean, there are so many things that we have to look at. And then on top of that, we've got our community that has so many fissures in it, and that we're just trying to bring those people back together, and we're doing that by doing good work. And that's what we're just trying to do, is just get the work that we're doing to be good for all of our community. So I don't have anything, anything more to add. Mrs. Colours?
I just wanted to bring up a couple of things. We all know we've got a ton of committees and things that we're doing, so I'm not going to go into those. I did want to say that I had made plans to be here an hour before meetings today. I wasn't able to do that because we went into closed session. Was here for our planning, work session last week, and I think we had one person come, but that's a start. So if you are interested in coming before meetings to for us to hear you, I'll be here, except on the days that we have a meeting, a closed session beforehand. Also, we have created the broadband committee, but we're all looking for some people to apply on each of our districts. I'm more than happy to make phone calls, and I've been trying to do that, but if you have an interest, either you've got a business background or broadband technology, and we need your help to help you. So if you would contact through the website, I believe, Mr. Shirachi, there is an application form there, so you're welcome to do that. Or on that website, each of our contact information is there for email and calling. Please, please do that. We need volunteers to help the mess. And the only other thing I wanted to say is to get out and vote. We see tonight what the importance of your voice is, but how better can it be said than to put it into a vote? And I know this Halloween, we won't meet till after Halloween, and I'd like to focus on the kids. This Halloween's going to be a weird Halloween, so everybody trick-or-treat as safely as you can with your kids, enjoy it the best you can, even if you sit on your own porch and throw candy to your own kids. Let's get some kid-friendly stuff going here tonight. Thank you.
Mr. Fox?
Attended airport commission meeting, and one of the topics was the noise that the tow plane makes while pulling the glider. And it's been addressed, but what I'd like to do is, on behalf of the airport, is to perhaps have a work session at some point if the noise continues on for the benefit to see what we might be able to do to remediate the noise maybe at certain hours or something. So that's all I have.
Thank you. Our interim county administrator, Mr. Daly?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Send you each copy of the report to let you know tomorrow at 5 o'clock, the school board will meet at Diversified Minds. They will have a presentation early in the meeting, 5:15, 5:20. They will have a presentation on the, from a consultant regarding health insurance, and they are in the same concern we have with Valley Health and YP, and you're invited to come and listen and learn about this as you would like. Today was our bond sale, and I want to send these across if I could, please. Came out a little different than what we had anticipated. I wanted to walk through it with you real quickly, if I may. Waiting for them to get a copy over here. If you look on page one there on the front, you see the way we originally looked at these bonds when they were first presented, being a total of $39,701. bonds when they were first presented, being a total of $39,701,000. That was back in August. And if you flip that over, just look at the back page there, that $1,111,485.35 is what we would have saved if we took all, sold all the bonds today. The market came in very strange from where it was just a week ago. Uh, and if you look at the top of that, back of that first page, you see the 2013, and the savings in the last column there run up to 14%. And that's pretty much what was anticipated. The savings in the lower half there on the 14, because those are the ones that are now not tax exempt or taxable, those savings are very low. And there's very few of them above 5%. Therefore, we looked at a couple of options. The next page, next full page there has at the bottom 2013 and some 2014. And it has a total circled of $9,546,500. And that, if you flip that page over and look, you can see we would sell all of the 2013s and only four of the 2014s. And that would save a total of $792.00. That drops down because we have the closing costs that are built into these bonds. And our average savings there, if you look, goes down below the 5% in the 2014s. So, if you look at the third page where it says 2013 alone, that's 4648 total. And if you flip that page over, the savings goes down to $277,000 because of the cost of the issuance. If you remember, we looked at the last meeting, the cost. So, when I talked to them today, I came, we came up with what you see here on the last full page, modified 2013 and 2014. And if, that's the total sale of $14,845,000. And if you flip that page over, you'll see that we sell all of the 2013s, and we sell five different issues of the 2014s. And it brings our savings back up to $922,234,000, and pushes the savings back up above the 5%. Uh, in the final, they came up, this afternoon, they came up with like 6.02%. So, it's just a little tad higher than this. And part of this is due that our advisor reduced the cost of the closing by $45,000. So, they contributed that to this project. So, this is what the sale will look like. It will be, uh, $14,845,000, and we will save $922,222,000. And we'll be able to sell any of the other bonds if the tax market changes so that they are no longer taxable next year or in the future. And so, that's what we did with that sale. And I wanted you to see that. It's a little bit different than what we had a week ago, Mr. May, but I, the market, the VSDA just did not get the rates they thought they would get. They were, they thought they were what you looked at last week, and it didn't happen because, uh, they feel it was because of, everybody flooded the market before the election. And it's a typical happening.
But we still said, Mike.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. You see, we saved the 5%. When you hit the big book, it'll be about 25 pages. You'll save approximately $90,000 a year.
That was going to be my question, is what's the yearly amount realized savings?
About what it's going to be.
Okay. Thanks, Mr. Daley.
The, um, anything else on that? Okay, the Chester Gap, uh-
Excuse me. I was looking at, on it back at the first page, and I didn't understand. The 715, 2025, that has a current interest rate of 5%?
Wait a minute, I didn't hear all of that.
That's right. 715, 2025, 14 year, uh, year 14 bonds. That's showing a 5% interest rate current?
See, 34.
What?
2034, sir?
Well, it'd be the 2014 bonds, I guess. But then the first one there, 715, 2025?
Okay.
And that's showing 5%. That's a current interest?
No, that's the interest rate that they would, the, the proposed purchaser was going to charge.
Oh, okay. Okay, okay. I just said, other numbers. Thanks.
Going back to, um, the Chester Gap, um, and Rattahannie County, they have looked at the proposed agreement that we drafted up, and we're going to send that down and let, uh, Jason have a shot at that, and it will be on your agenda November 4th. It's ready to be completed.
Yeah, I was asked that this afternoon.
And, uh, regarding the question of the demonstration last week, uh, Major Driscoll from the sheriff's office has drafted a permit process that we're circulating through our departments. And we will be presenting to you hopefully next month. That will have a from process or an permit in the use of county resources for that type of events. Excuse me. Um, as you were speaking, Mr. Chairman, I got a note back from the facilitator, and the dates, uh, you suggested are good if you want to announce them.
Okay.
Who's the facilitator?
Sharon Gromley from Winchester, sir.
So, I believe that the proposed dates, then?
I've got 13th and 14th.
Um, let me just double check that in my calendar. I have it up, so let me know.
It's not the right date?
No, it doesn't. I keep getting off, I'm trying to figure out how to get it out. It is the 13th and 14th.
That's a Friday and a Saturday?
That's correct. Friday night and Saturday. So, it'll be a couple hours on Friday evening, Mr. Daley, and then, or Dr. Daley, and then, um, like maybe six hours on Saturday, like the EDA. I think the EDA did 8 until 3 with an hour or a little bit longer for lunch.
Mrs. Gromley might be a little- A little bit closer. We will be asking our, um, senior management team from the county to participate in this with you, and the chair of your committees, your key committees will be with you also.
Move work at absolute end time, or begin times, end times over the next few days?
Yes, sir.
All right.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much.
One more question. It, um, can we do this by Zoom, like we did the EDA strategic planning? It worked very well for those who wanted to be in Zoom meetings.
I believe we can do that. Let me talk to her, not talk to her, about creating the Zoom rooms. Uh-
So, breakout sessions?
That'll be a new technology, but we ought to be able to do it. I'm sure Mr. Chiraki can teach us.
Sure can.
Yes, we ought to be able to do this, I'm guessing.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our interim county attorney, Mr. Han?
I have no report.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda is to approve the, approve the minutes for, uh, our special meeting on October 1st, 2020, and our regular meeting on October 6th, 2020. So, move.
Second.
Is there any discussion or concerns? Can we get a roll call, please?
Mr. Fox?
Aye.
Ms. Colours?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman?
Aye.
Ms. Oats?
Aye.
Mr. Carter?
Aye.
Next item on our agenda is the appropriations and transfers. Do we have a motion on those? Move to approve.
Second.
Additional questions or concerns? Roll call, please. Emily?
Mr. Carter?
Aye.
Ms. Oats?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman?
Aye.
Ms. Colours?
Aye.
Mr. Fox?
Aye.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Uh, just so that you all know, you each have these little purple books, and these little purple books show you the line items of each departmental budget, so you can look and see what they are.
Did you, did everybody get one of those? I know that you gave them out.
And then folding the big sheet. This is the special projects, everything that's reserved for any particular project. And finance is working to clean some of these up from prior years, but there's no activity anymore. But you can see all of the projects, you can see what they are and what money's flown in and out of them in the last 12 months.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda is, is the approval of the accounts. Move to approve. Second?
Second.
Any questions, concerns? Roll call, please. Mr. Chiraki?
Mr. Fox?
Aye.
Ms. Colours?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman?
Aye.
Ms. Oats?
Aye.
Mr. Carter?
Aye.
Next item on the agenda is the consent. Uh, are there any items to be pulled for further discussion?
I'd like to pull number four, please.
I made the motion that we approved the consent agenda with the, uh, with the absence of number four.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions or concern? Could we get a roll call, please?
Mr. Carter?
Aye.
Ms. Oats?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman?
Aye.
Ms. Colours?
Aye.
Mr. Fox?
Aye.
Item number four, the request for closure of county circuit court office on December 31st, uh, 2020?
Uh, yes, it was brought to our attention at our work session that, and I'll read here, is that the Warren County Circuit Court Office is requesting to be closed to the public on December 31st. The Supreme Court of Virginia is closed on this day, but the governor of Virginia has not chosen to observe or designate it as a holiday. So, um, I move that the board supervisors approve the request of this clerk of the circuit board to close the Warren County Circuit Court on December 31st, New Year's Eve. For any year the Supreme Court of Virginia declares this day a holiday, but the governor of Virginia does not. I also move that the board supervisor declares this day a holiday for all Warren County government offices.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
I just know that in the past, and that's what the governor will do, especially if it's Thanksgiving, uh, New Year's Eve, a lot of times he'll go and grant that to state employees. Um, and that's a little bit cheaper than giving a pay raise. But I, I would, I don't think I would go as far as what you're proposing. Um, and there again, more often than not, the, the governor grants those holidays anyway. And again, I mean, I, I don't know, I don't know how much of a convenience it is. I don't know how many people show up on New Year's Eve.
Well, I just think with the requests that, um, Mrs. Moore made, it, it makes sense. They, they can't do their job adequately when part of the system they need is shut down. So, if we're going to grant them, I just think it's fair to the rest of the county employees that we can serve them, especially this year with everything that they've had to deal with with COVID and so forth. So, I just, I just thought it was, um, the right thing to do for our county employees.
But if I understand, maybe I'm wrong on that, uh, what, they're getting clarified. For the court, it's not open to the public, but will they still be down there catching up on stuff?
No.
No.
No. Okay, because that was part of it too. I'm okay with doing it for this year. But if I understood your motion correctly, and it said every, every time, or something like that.
Except for any year the Supreme Court of Virginia declares this day as a holiday.
I don't think I'd go that far. Because, I mean, like I said, usually the governor goes ahead and does that. I'm okay with doing it this year, and then see how it plays out next year. So, I'll make that amendment. Yes, Mr. Daley?
Just as a suggestion, um, this year in particular, the, the first is, is on a Friday. So, it would be Thursday, Friday. Next year, it would be Friday, Saturday, because Friday would be the New Year's holiday. In two years, it's going to be like Sunday. So, Saturday, I would recommend that you approve this for this year, and then look at future years when that December 31st is.
I'll make that amendment. Or would you like to restate your motion? That may be easier, if you're agreeable to that.
I'm going to restate your motion.
So-
If you move the second down here as the motion, the, under the O, and then just add county facilities.
So, you want me to go with the second one and add that? Okay. I move the board supervisors. Okay, that's-
Yeah, that's not right either. I would make it just for the year. I would make it for-
I will amend my motion to say for this year with consideration each year-
Yeah, we'll consider each year.
Have you got the second?
And that would, that includes county employees and the courthouse, right?
Yes.
Correct.
Do you have a second?
I'll second it.
Any additional questions or concerns?
And social services.
Um, can we get a roll call, please? Mrs. Chiraki?
Mr. Fox?
Aye.
Ms. Colours?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman?
Aye.
Ms. Oats?
Aye.
Mr. Carter?
Aye.
Thank you.
Any business, I don't believe. Motion for adjournment?
Move to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.